I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:02 PM. And this is for the proposed budget presentation. And I'd like to do the roll call. Trustee Aaron's.
Here.
Camera.
Here.
Carbonaro.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
Shipman.
Here.
President Wallace is absent. And would you?
I have a question for the chairman of the meeting.
Okay. Who is going to be? Is there any nominations for the chair of this meeting?
I nominate trustee Ranky.
Okay. And a second?
A second.
Okay. We'll do a roll call on that?
Well, yes, for other nominees.
Any other nominees?
I nominate trustee Aaron's.
Second.
Okay. Any other nominees?
Can I nominate you?
Let's all get nominated.
What the hell?
Okay.
No, I have no nomination.
No others? So we have two nominees. I guess I'll take a vote. Okay. Just state who you'll be nominating. Trustee Aaron's?
Trustee.
Yeah, yes.
Me.
Okay. Camera.
Trustee Aaron's.
Carbonaro.
Trustee Ranky.
Martin.
Trustee Ranky.
Ranky.
Me, I guess.
Shipman.
Well, now, this could present a real issue, couldn't it? Trustee Aaron's.
Okay.
So you split the tie.
Or do a revote.
Okay.
Do a second round.
Would we like to do a revote?
Have we never done this before?
No.
We don't have any way to break the tie. Go ahead and do a revote. The two candidates can't vote for themselves.
Oh, that's fair enough.
It's still going to be two to two, right?
Because you're already counting for yourself. So just do the revote.
Okay. Trustee.
This is embarrassing.
But we have a tie.
It's pretty, it's known that you're voting for yourself and he's voting for himself. So just do the recount.
Okay. Trustee Camera.
Trustee Aaron's.
Trustee Carbonaro.
Trustee Ranky.
Martin.
Trustee Ranky.
Ranky.
Me, I guess.
Shipman.
Well, now, this could present a real issue, couldn't it? Trustee Aaron's.
Okay.
So you split the tie.
Or do a revote.
Okay.
Do a second round.
Would we like to do a revote?
Have we never done this before?
No.
We don't have any way to break the tie. Go ahead and do a revote. The two candidates can't vote for themselves.
Oh, that's fair enough.
It's still going to be two to two, right?
Because you're already counting for yourself. So just do the revote.
Okay. Trustee.
This is embarrassing.
But we have a tie.
It's pretty, it's known that you're voting for yourself and he's voting for himself. So just do the recount.
Okay. Trustee Camera.
Trustee Aaron's.
Trustee Carbonaro.
Trustee Ranky.
Martin.
Trustee Aaron's.
Shipman.
Ranky. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you, who did you say?
I said trustee Aaron's.
Oh, then trustee Aaron's. Let's just get this going.
Right, yeah, let's keep moving.
Okay, then we'll appoint trustee Aaron's as the chair of the meeting.
I would like to introduce Pastor Jim Paul from the World of Public Works.
I don't think we have that yet. During the board meeting at 7 o'clock, he'll be here.
Okay. Let's see. Let's go right into the, we'll go right into the budget presentation then.
Thank you. I'll have our finance director go through the details of that presentation.
Thank you, Valerie. Thank you, members of the village board, President Pro Tem Aaron's, village staff, and residents of the village of Bartlett. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce our 2015-2016 proposed budget. And before I get into the details of the budget, there's a lot that goes into constructing this budget. So our village of Bartlett budget is much more than just a numbers document. Our budget serves four main areas that we assemble this budget and prepare it by. The budget is a policy document. It has village-wide long-term financial policies, village-wide non-financial goals and objectives, such as the strategic plan, which we just attended and participated in. We also have clearly stated goals and objectives that you'll see in each of the departments. The budget is also a financial plan. We summarize our major revenues and expenditures in one large section of the budget document. We have a description of all of our major revenue sources, which I'll be going over this evening, and we project our major changes in fund balances to many of our operating funds. The budget serves as an operations guide. The budget describes the activities, services, and functions of the village. The budget includes an organizational chart, and the budget includes a personnel summary. And finally, the budget serves as a communications device. We define who prepares, develops, reviews, and adopts the budget. Our village administrator provides a detailed budget message, which I'm sure everybody has had the opportunity to read this evening. Again, we define our financial policies, our fund balance, our long-term capital planning, which is our capital improvement plan, which was approved back in December and has been incorporated into this operating budget. And finally, the budget includes statistical data to convey long-term information to the public. So once again, we will endeavor to apply for the GFOA's Certificate of Achievement for Distinguished Budgeting. We've been successful for many years. Just recently, the GFOA awarded us our budget award a couple meetings ago. So we will be applying for that in the spring and early summer, once this budget is adopted. The budget calendar, some things that we want to make the board aware of. March 10th, we were due to meet. We'll push that meeting back to March 17th, where the departments then will introduce their budgets to the village board. The budget is due to be adopted the first meeting in April, but we built in sufficient time to have any other discussion about the budget that the board deems fit. So then, looking at this budget in its totality, where the money goes, we have total expenditures of $62,157,361. Capital projects represent 35% of the budget. Debt service for repayment of general obligation bonds represent 3% of the budget. 4% of the budget is for the golf course. General government, which includes administration, finance, community, community development, building, et cetera, is 12% of the budget. Public safety, our police department, is 22%. And public works, streets, water, sewer, and the parking fund represents 24% of the total budget. Where the money comes from. Total revenues for this budget, $58,925,233. We have certain categories that we classify our revenues as. Property taxes represent 16% of the budget. Other taxes, such as the income tax, telecommunications tax, sales tax, represent 29% of the budget. Charges for services in our enterprise funds represent 22%. Interest income of 1%. Borrowings at 22%, and this also includes notes and bonds that we have in our TIF districts. Other revenues then make up the last 10% of our revenue budget. Our operating versus our capital expenditures. In the beige shaded region, our historical operating expenses, going back to 2006, 2007, you can see that in '12, starting in '12, '13, up until this point, that line has remained pretty flat, trending right about $40 million. And then, the blue shaded region is our capital projects. Those vary year to year based upon the requested needs that the village has for infrastructure and capital needs, et cetera. Total operating budget is $40,581,752. And our total capital improvements are $17,188,631. So we'll move into the revenue. Trustee Aaron's?
Could you explain the difference between this amount and the total budget?
The total of 40.5 and the 17.18, along with the other capital, capital costs in the capital improvement funds, make up that total of all of our expenses.
Okay. So the expenses are almost $5 million and less and some revenues?
Yeah, there's additional expenses in the capital improvement funds. What I tried to do here is just break out the capital improvement costs, such as cutting down our ash trees and things like that.
Is there a healthy ratio between operating and capital improvement?
They don't affect each other. The ratio would be in each of the operating funds, as far as the policy and the level of fund balance that we have. Usually, we want to reserve 25% to 35% of our operating expenditures in each of those funds. But a lot of our capital improvements are funded through the IEPA loan program or bonds or things like that. And you will see in this budget that there are IEPA loans in the water and sewer fund to finance those costs. So moving into the revenue review section, again, our total revenue, our total revenue, $58.9 million, 17% increase. And that 17%, as I just mentioned, is for IEPA loans to cover infrastructure projects and the water and sewer funds. The 2012 road bonds were issued in 2011, '12. That's why you see that spike there. And again, as that line at the end, at 2015, '16, has increased, that is primarily loan proceeds and grants in the capital projects and sewer funds. First section, major revenue section to review this evening are property taxes. Property taxes make up $93,354,364. Again, it's 16% of total revenue. It represents a $338,162 decrease, or 3% from last year's budget. The dollar amount includes levy for the general corporate, police pension, and debt service. The village share of the property tax pie, as compared to other taxing districts, is now at 8%. We've actually dropped. We used to be at 9%. That's primarily due to the reduction of property taxes that we've had. We're projecting our EAV, finally, to be flat, not decreasing. That's from numbers from the DuPage County Clerk's office. That's good news. That should help flatten out or lower the rate in time. The estimated DuPage rate is $1.09 per $100. And the Cook County rate estimate is 99 cents per $100. Again, we are not budgeting any increase to the general corporate levy. Review of the levy timetable. Once this budget is adopted, then we come back in the fall to levy those dollars. The county clerk extends it next year in 2016. And then, in June and September of 2016, we'll collect those taxes in DuPage. And in September and March of 2016, we'll begin to collect Cook County taxes that represent this levy. Property tax rates, our tax rate history. In red is DuPage, and blue is Cook. You can see that in 2010 or 2011, we were really under, right about 80 cents per 100. Again, we're about each, you know, about $1.09, a dollar for both DuPage and Cook. The reason why we see an increase in these years is simply because the EAV's been lowered. So that, in turn, raises the rate, but the village is not collecting any additional property tax dollars in the general corporate levy. Here is a 10-year history of our EAV. You can see at 2008, 2009, before the recession, we were up over $1.2 billion, $1.3 billion of EAV. In 2015, we're projecting right about $1 million. And again, that's pretty much flat from 2014. Other taxes, the income tax, we have a budget of $4.1 million, represents 7% of total revenue. We are projecting right now an $82,250 increase, or 2% from last year's budget. The village receives revenue based upon an IML per capita, per capita projection of $99 per capita on our population of 41,208. IML currently raised their projection 2% for 2016. I believe this is pretty conservative, given the increases that we've seen over the last three years. And as I'm sure everybody is aware, and we'll be talking a little bit more, committee meeting, the state of Illinois rate now is 3.75. It has been reduced from 5%. And the village currently receives 8% of the income tax, which comes to the municipalities. And again, I know there's been much talk about this, and we'll cover that under our committee meeting. Local use tax, $802,500, about 1.4% of total revenue. Represents an $82,000 increase, or 11% from last year. Again, we use an IML rate, which right now is $17.80 per capita on our population. The use tax is a form of sales tax for goods purchased and delivered from outside of Illinois are taxed. This is a revenue source that's done very well over the last four years, has increased by 5% to 6% for some time now, and has really become a really excellent revenue source as it keeps increasing. One of the things that I wanted to mention is Illinois implemented a voluntary pay program that is supposedly generating more revenue at the state, as we're all going to be doing our income taxes. Out-of-state purchases should be reported on individuals' tax returns. And I think, to some degree, that's why we've seen an increase since that went into effect. Our sales tax budget, $2,115,000, 3%, 3.6% of total revenue. It is a $40,000 increase, or a 2% increase from last year's budget. Village receives 1% on purchases made within the village. The tax is collected by the state, and it's remitted three months lag from when the state receives it to when it gives it to the village. We have sales tax sharing agreements, and they're reflected as expenditures in the community development department's budget under repays. And we currently have one agreement with Welsh. That's probably due to expire in the next three or four years. And then, we won't have any other sales tax sharing agreements on the books. Telecommunications tax, we have a budget of $1,175,000, represents 2% of total revenue. We are budgeting $125,000 decrease, or 10% from last year. This is a revenue source that has been pretty stagnant and declining over the last three or four years. Again, it's a 6% tax on land and cellular service. State of Illinois collects it the same way they collect sales tax and remit it the same way. And the reduction most likely is due to more unlimited services for texting and data with internet services that really don't apply to this. So it's something that we've tried to adjust our budget to, because we have seen approximately a $300,000 decrease in telecom tax over the last three years. Real estate transfer tax, we have a $510,000 budget. It's less than 1% of total revenue. We are budgeting $100,000 increase, or 24% from last year. Higher home values are contributing to the increase that we are currently seeing in the real estate transfer tax. We have some new proposed developments that are going on. We hope that that's also going to generate additional revenue for the real estate transfer tax. We like to point out, in 2005, 2006, this source generated over $1.6 million. But currently, from that time period, it has decreased $1,137,000. So we're finally starting to see little increments here as the economy improves and the housing market also picks up. Under other taxes, the natural gas utility tax, we have a budget of $1,085,000, represents 1.8% of our total revenue, budgeting a $10,000 decrease, or 1% from last year. Again, this is a 5% tax on residential and commercial usage, natural gas usage. This reduction is based upon current returns that we're seeing and what we've seen over the last couple of years. Not a large decrease, but this puts us at, I think, what we're realistically going to receive. The electric utility tax, we have a budget of $606,000, 1% of our total revenue. Again, we're budgeting a $4,000 decrease, or just 1% from last year. It's a little bit more complicated, as far as the way ComEd charges our customers for the electric utility tax. It's a per kilowatt hour charge for electric usage on residential and commercial use, and there's tiers of usage based upon what a resident or commercial business actually uses. The rates to be charged are set by state statute. That's what happened when we implemented this. And there's a proposal tonight on the committee agenda this evening to eliminate the electric utility tax in full next year or over the next two years. And we'll talk more about that at our committee meeting. Moving into our enterprise fund revenue, water sales, we're projecting water sales to be a little bit over $7.1 million, 12% of total revenue. It's a $375,000 increase, or 6% from last fiscal year. Obviously, revenue is based upon our consumption estimates. Our budget assumes 1 billion gallons to be billed, and we've seen some increases over the last several years. We've factored in a 1% increase in consumption with some of the industrial buildings that we have going on and some of our industrial residents. They're, they use a significant amount of water, and we benefited from that. The average residential monthly water bill in the proposed budget, based on 6,000 gallons, is $38.16. And we will be reviewing our rates in January of '16 to see where we stand, to see if it's, if they'll cover our operating expenses. And at that time, we'll have more information about what type of water source the village will have, as far as the cost of the water and the capital construction costs from the new water source. Our water revenue and consumption history, again, 2005, we were at a real high point, just about $1.2 billion gallons billed. And then, during the recession, from '08 through '11, we saw a pretty significant decline in water consumption, and that did force us to increase rates a little bit in that time period. 2012 was a major drought year. I can tell you that that drought year did generate some significant revenue, and that's helped to build a reserve or fund balance back to the levels that are dictated by our policy. And our water consumption, or I should say, our water revenues over a 10-year period have steadily increased, except for the '08, '09, '09, '10 fiscal year, when we saw a decrease there. So, pretty good news as far as the water fund. Our sewer sales, we have a budget of $3.2 million, 5% and 1/2% of total revenue. It's a $30,500 increase from last year, or just over 1%. The way we bill for sewer is a little different. 50% of our sewer sales are fixed costs, and that's different, whereas 100% of consumption is charged on the water side. Depending on whether you live in Cook or DuPage, you'll pay a different rate. Cook and Kane, the average monthly bill, based on 6,000 gallons, is $13.83 per month, and DuPage is $22.49. We'll also be reviewing sewer rates in January of 2016. It's been now since 2012, since we've done that. So again, I think it's prudent that we do that, to see how our sewer sales are matching up to our operating expenses. Moving on to our golf course. At the golf course in particular, our service charges are $1,281,900. It's 2.2% of total revenue. We're budgeting a $71,000 decrease, or 5% decrease from last year. Our proposed budget projects 35,500 rounds. That's down from 37,000 rounds from last year, a $1,500 round decrease from last year. And that estimate is based upon trends that we've seen over the last two years. Our pro shop sales are budgeted at 73,500. We're down 11%, primarily due to inventory reduction in sales. In the pro shop, if you walk through the pro shop, our inventory is really low, and it has been for the last many years, to kind of catch up with, you know, the decreased economy that pertains to the golf course. Our food and beverage sales, we budgeted $980,000, 1.6% of total revenue. It's a $14,000 increase from last year, or just over 1%. The way we bill for ash trees and things like that.
Is there a healthy ratio between operating and capital improvement?
They don't affect each other. The ratio would be in each of the operating funds, as far as the policy and the level of fund balance that we have. Usually, we want to reserve 25% to 35% of our operating expenditures in each of those funds. But a lot of our capital improvements are funded through the IEPA loan program or bonds or things like that. And you will see in this budget that there are IEPA loans in the water and sewer fund to finance those costs. So moving into the revenue review section, again, our total revenue, our total revenue, $58.9 million, 17% increase. And that 17%, as I just mentioned, is for IEPA loans to cover infrastructure projects and the water and sewer funds. The 2012 road bonds were issued in 2011, '12. That's why you see that spike there. And again, as that line at the end, at 2015, '16, has increased, that is primarily loan proceeds and grants in the capital projects and sewer funds. First section, major revenue section to review this evening are property taxes. Property taxes make up $93,354,364. Again, it's 16% of total revenue. It represents a $338,162 decrease, or 3% from last year's budget. The dollar amount includes levy for the general corporate, police pension, and debt service. The village share of the property tax pie, as compared to other taxing districts, is now at 8%. We've actually dropped. We used to be at 9%. That's primarily due to the reduction of property taxes that we've had. We're projecting our EAV, finally, to be flat, not decreasing. That's from numbers from the DuPage County Clerk's office. That's good news. That should help flatten out or lower the rate in time. The estimated DuPage rate is $1.09 per $100. And the Cook County rate estimate is 99 cents per $100. Again, we are not budgeting any increase to the general corporate levy. Review of the levy timetable. Once this budget is adopted, then we come back in the fall to levy those dollars. The county clerk extends it next year in 2016. And then, in June and September of 2016, we'll collect those taxes in DuPage. And in September and March of 2016, we'll begin to collect Cook County taxes that represent this levy. Property tax rates, our tax rate history. In red is DuPage, and blue is Cook. You can see that in 2010 or 2011, we were really under, right about 80 cents per 100. Again, we're about each, you know, about $1.09, a dollar for both DuPage and Cook. The reason why we see an increase in these years is simply because the EAV's been lowered. So that, in turn, raises the rate, but the village is not collecting any additional property tax dollars in the general corporate levy. Here is a 10-year history of our EAV. You can see at 2008, 2009, before the recession, we were up over $1.2 billion, $1.3 billion of EAV. In 2015, we're projecting right about $1 million. And again, that's pretty much flat from 2014. Other taxes, the income tax, we have a budget of $4.1 million, represents 7% of total revenue. We are projecting right now an $82,250 increase, or 2% from last year's budget. The village receives revenue based upon an IML per capita, per capita projection of $99 per capita on our population of 41,208. IML currently raised their projection 2% for 2016. I believe this is pretty conservative, given the increases that we've seen over the last three years. And as I'm sure everybody is aware, and we'll be talking a little bit more, committee meeting, the state of Illinois rate now is 3.75. It has been reduced from 5%. And the village currently receives 8% of the income tax, which comes to the municipalities. And again, I know there's been much talk about this, and we'll cover that under our committee meeting. Local use tax, $802,500, about 1.4% of total revenue. Represents an $82,000 increase, or 11% from last year. Again, we use an IML rate, which right now is $17.80 per capita on our population. The use tax is a form of sales tax for goods purchased and delivered from outside of Illinois are taxed. This is a revenue source that's done very well over the last four years, has increased by 5% to 6% for some time now, and has really become a really excellent revenue source as it keeps increasing. One of the things that I wanted to mention is Illinois implemented a voluntary pay program that is supposedly generating more revenue at the state, as we're all going to be doing our income taxes. Out-of-state purchases should be reported on individuals' tax returns. And I think, to some degree, that's why we've seen an increase since that went into effect. Our sales tax budget, $2,115,000, 3%, 3.6% of total revenue. It is a $40,000 increase, or a 2% increase from last year's budget. Village receives 1% on purchases made within the village. The tax is collected by the state, and it's remitted three months lag from when the state receives it to when it gives it to the village. We have sales tax sharing agreements, and they're reflected as expenditures in the community development department's budget under repays. And we currently have one agreement with Welsh. That's probably due to expire in the next three or four years. And then, we won't have any other sales tax sharing agreements on the books. Telecommunications tax, we have a budget of $1,175,000, represents 2% of total revenue. We are budgeting $125,000 decrease, or 10% from last year. This is a revenue source that has been pretty stagnant and declining over the last three or four years. Again, it's a 6% tax on land and cellular service. State of Illinois collects it the same way they collect sales tax and remit it the same way. And the reduction most likely is due to more unlimited services for texting and data with internet services that really don't apply to this. So it's something that we've tried to adjust our budget to, because we have seen approximately a $300,000 decrease in telecom tax over the last three years. Real estate transfer tax, we have a $510,000 budget. It's less than 1% of total revenue. We are budgeting $100,000 increase, or 24% from last year. Higher home values are contributing to the increase that we are currently seeing in the real estate transfer tax. We have some new proposed developments that are going on. We hope that that's also going to generate additional revenue for the real estate transfer tax. We like to point out, in 2005, 2006, this source generated over $1.6 million. But currently, from that time period, it has decreased $1,137,000. So we're finally starting to see little increments here as the economy improves and the housing market also picks up. Under other taxes, the natural gas utility tax, we have a budget of $1,085,000, represents 1.8% of our total revenue, budgeting a $10,000 decrease, or 1% from last year. Again, this is a 5% tax on residential and commercial usage, natural gas usage. This reduction is based upon current returns that we're seeing and what we've seen over the last couple of years. Not a large decrease, but this puts us at, I think, what we're realistically going to receive. The electric utility tax, we have a budget of $606,000, 1% of our total revenue. Again, we're budgeting a $4,000 decrease, or just 1% from last year. It's a little bit more complicated, as far as the way ComEd charges our customers for the electric utility tax. It's a per kilowatt hour charge for electric usage on residential and commercial use, and there's tiers of usage based upon what a resident or commercial business actually uses. The rates to be charged are set by state statute. That's what happened when we implemented this. And there's a proposal tonight on the committee agenda this evening to eliminate the electric utility tax in full next year or over the next two years. And we'll talk more about that at our committee meeting. Moving into our enterprise fund revenue, water sales, we're projecting water sales to be a little bit over $7.1 million, 12% of total revenue. It's a $375,000 increase, or 6% from last fiscal year. Obviously, revenue is based upon our consumption estimates.
Or 1% from last year. Again, this is a 5% tax on residential and commercial usage, natural gas usage. This reduction is based upon current returns that we're seeing and what we've seen over the last couple of years. Not a large decrease, but this puts us at, I think, what we're realistically going to The electric utility tax, we have a budget of $606,000, 1% of our total revenue. Again, we're budgeting a $4,000 decrease or just 1% from last year. It's a little bit more complicated as far as the way ComEd charges our customers for the electric utility tax. It's a per kilowatt hour charge for electric usage on residential and commercial use, and there's tiers of usage based upon what a resident or commercial business actually uses. The rates to be charged are set by state statute. That's what happened when we implemented this. And there's a proposal tonight on the committee agenda this evening to eliminate the electric utility tax in full next year or over the next two years, and we'll talk more about that at our committee meeting. Moving into our enterprise fund revenue, water sales, we're projecting water sales to be a little bit over 7.1 million. 12% of total revenue. It's a $375,000 increase or 6% from last fiscal year. Obviously, revenue is based upon our consumption estimates. Our budget assumes 1 billion gallons to be billed, and we've seen some increases over the last several years. We've factored in a 1% increase in consumption with some of the industrial buildings that we have going on and some of our industrial residents, they use a significant amount of water, and we benefited from that. The average residential monthly water bill in the proposed budget, based on 6,000 gallons, is $38.16. And we will be reviewing our rates in January of '16 to see where we stand, to see if it's -- they'll cover our operating expenses. And at that time, we'll have more information about what type of water source the village will have as far as the cost of the water and the capital construction costs from the new water source. Our water revenue and consumption history, again, 2005, we were at a real high point, just about 1.2 billion gallons billed. And then during the recession from '08 through '11, we saw a pretty significant decline in water consumption, and that did force us to increase rates a little bit in that time period. 2012 was a major drought year. I can tell you that that drought year did generate some significant revenue, and that's helped to build a reserve or fund balance back to the levels that are dictated by our policy. And our water consumption, I should say, our water revenues over a 10-year period have steadily increased, except for the '08-'09, '09-'10 fiscal year when we saw a decrease there. So, pretty good news as far as the water fund. Our sewer sales, we have a budget of $3.2 million, 5.5% of total revenue. It's a $30,500 increase from last year or just over 1%. The way we bill for sewer is a little different. 50% of our sewer sales are fixed costs, and that's different, whereas 100% of consumption is charged on the water side. Depending on whether you live in Cook or DuPage, you'll pay a different rate. Cook and Kane, the average monthly bill, based on 6,000 gallons, is $13.83 per month, and DuPage is $22.49. We'll also be reviewing sewer rates in January of 2016. It's been now since 2012, since we've done that, so again, I think it's prudent that we do that to see how our sewer sales are matching up to our operating expenses. Moving on to our golf course. At the golf course in particular, our service charges are $1,281,900. It's 2.2% of total revenue. We're budgeting a $71,000 decrease or 5% decrease from last year. Our proposed budget projects 35,500 rounds. That's down from 37,000 rounds from last year, a $1,500 round decrease from last year. And that estimate is based upon trends that we've seen over the last two years. Our pro shop sales are budgeted at 73,500. We're down 11%, primarily due to inventory reduction in sales. In the pro shop, if you walk through the pro shop, our inventory is really low and it has been for the last many years to kind of catch up with, you know, the decreased economy that pertains to the golf course. Our food and beverage sales, we budgeted $980,000, 1.6% of total revenue. It's a $14,000 increase from last fiscal year or a 1% increase. Our current year budget has an estimate increase of 1% in food and beverage sales. Now, the hope is with the expansion of the bar and the banquet facility that this is a conservative estimate. I think we'd like to get another year under our belt before we start projecting revenues for food and beverage to go up. But if all goes well, if weather is good, if weddings keep expanding the way they are, I know that Paul has said that he's received many calls about banquets and weddings, more than what we had last year at this time, we should see a nice increase then for food and beverage sales. The opening of the expanded banquet area begins next month, so it's an exciting time at the golf course. If you haven't been there yet, it's really a nice addition. The bar and the banquet area is a lot bigger than what the pictures have showed, so it's a nice upgrade. Other revenues are development and building permits. We budgeted $675,500. That's a little over 1% of total revenue. We are budgeting for an increase of $239,900 or 55% from this current fiscal year. The projected number of new residential permits right now in this budget is 10. We think that's very conservative, given what's been going on. As far as Brian Goralski's area is concerned, there is potential for a lot more development than just 10 residential permits or two commercial permits. We've also budgeted for 2,200 miscellaneous permits, and I think the last several years we've had about 2,600-plus miscellaneous permits. So, business is picking up at the building department, and I think we're able to take advantage of that by projecting additional revenue for building permits. At this point, if there's any questions on any slides pertaining to our revenue sources, I'd be happy to answer those, or we can just move into the expenditures section. Okay.
Thanks, though.
Our proposed operating expenditures, again, are $40,581,752 and represent a 0.33% increase from last year's budget. This is a 10-year history of our operating expenditures, and again, you know, we've tried real hard to keep those operating expenditures down or flat. We've cut in certain places, and I think that this number shows that our operating expenditure increases are reasonably projected and conservative. Our operating expenditures by type, personnel services in the budget make up 51%, contractual services at 20%, commodities at 5%, other charges at 18%, and our capital outlay represents 6% of the total budget. Our operating expenditures by department, golf course represents 6%, debt service, again, is at 5%, public works is at 37%, public safety, including our police pension fund at 33%, and general government at 19% of total expenses. Starting out with our first operating department will be public works. Again, public works is broken down into four areas, streets at 27%, water at 49%, sewer at 23%, and the parking operation at 1% of public works' operating expenditures. The total public works budget is $14.9 million this year, again, 37% of our total operating expenditures. We're budgeting a $272,657 increase or 1.8% that should be increased, I apologize, from last year. Some of the highlights under public works that Dan will be explaining a little bit more. We budgeted $246,000 for tree replacements and tree trimming for the Emerald Ash Borer Program. Again, we'll have a selection of the new water source and funding of capital projects to accommodate the upgrades that are needed. And we have $20,000 hours for new trash receptacles in the downtown, but as that plan changes, I believe that we may not need those.
Right. We have a couple of different planning grants and activities downtown, and there's likely some changes into our street scape plan, so we'll have to wait and see what they're going to do. Our current baskets are many years old and falling apart, so we'll see what they come up with.
So, are you proposing then $20,000 for new receptacles or not?
No, I am not. If they fall apart to the point that we've really got to replace them and there's a new project, there's a potential to pay for that out of TIF. So, I'm not proposing in any way, shape, or form that it comes from the operating budget.
Our public safety department expenditures, our police department, obviously, the police department makes up 84% of the total expenses. Our police pension budget is 16%, and we wanted to make note on the police pension that currently we're funded at 85%. The assets needed to cover the liabilities, that was the actuarial projection that we had, a 5, one of 14. Again, we're experiencing some really good investment returns in our police pension portfolio, and I fully expect that that funding level remain constant or increase from where it currently is.
That doesn't mean that you can retire early?
Total police budget is $13,461,378, 33% of total expenditures. It's a $343,119 increase or 2.6% from last fiscal year. Some of the highlights in the police department will continue. The annual funding of five patrol vehicles and four other vehicles for a total of $294,000. We continue to utilize grant funding for DUI and vehicle speed enforcement, and there's continued funding for community relations such as National Night Out that's in this General governmental expenditures by program, admin makes up 19% of general government. Professional services, which are attorneys, engineers, and architects in our actuarial, make up 9%. Liability insurance represents 9% of general government. Finance department, including human resources and IT, makes up 23%. Community development at 15, the building department at 15%, and we have some operating expenses in the Brewster Creek TIF municipal fund, and that represents 10% of total general governmental expenditures. Total expenditures under this program, $7,764,025, again, 19% of the total, $158,090 increase or 2% from last year. Some of the highlights under this program, we're budgeting for an updated air photo of the village. Last photo that was taken was in 2007. We'll continue funding for community events such as the Fourth of July. We budgeted for new wireless microphones and the projector that we're currently using. You'll notice that the resolution now for this projector and the way it shows is getting a little bit dim. I think this projector now is about 10 years old. And we'll try to continue our expansion of our GIS capabilities. That program is expanding, and we're doing a lot of different things with GIS now. Our golf course expenditures by program, the golf program, 28%. Our golf maintenance division is at 29% of the total golf course, driving range at 1%, the restaurant at 14, our banquet at 26%, and the midway operating expenditures at 2%. Our total program expenditures under the golf course are $2,435,373, represents 6% of our total expenditures. We have a $107,899 decrease or 4.2% from last fiscal year. Some of the highlights in the golf program, we've reduced the golf program or the operations that run the golf course, 22% from last year. That's in large part due to some of the openings that we have for staff. I will tell you that as we go through the budget, the golf course is balanced. The revenues that we projected while they're down, the operating expenses that are paid by those revenues are also down, and we're projecting about a $9,000 surplus this year at the golf course.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is your intention to leave the golf course management as it is?
The intent was not to replace the golf pro manager position, but to have a full-time golf pro that we have out there now, just as a golf pro as opposed to the assistant golf pro. I think that we can, we have watched the system as it is now with three people in charge over there, and I think it's done pretty well. And if we can save that kind of money for a longer period of time, I think that's important. The other thing I wanted to say was, at this, excuse me, at this time last year, during the golf review, the board came up with a lot of good ideas of things that we might want to pursue, and we did. Came up with some, the staff came up with some additional ones, and we have tracked those. We gave you a review of those late summer, and now we've done them for a whole year, and we'll go through that in detail. But the amount that we increased revenues by virtue of doing that, and they're all giving me a dirty look because nobody knows the exact number because we're not supposed to be reviewing it tonight, but anyhow, it's a lot. And I think that when we review that, it really goes back to the budget review last year and following through with those things.
Yeah, and with the expansion of the banquet facility and the bar, there's hope that that's going to generate even more revenue. So, taking a look at some of the highlights of this budget in its totality, the budget includes no new taxes or fees. Again, we have a flat property tax levy in our general corporate fund. We've provided $780,500 for vehicle replacements. That's coming out of our vehicle replacement fund. We are proposing to have new personnel, one part-time data entry clerk in the building department as things pick up in the building department, and a GIS technician in the community development department. Jim will be speaking a little bit more about those positions or that position when his department is up for review. We still have seven positions being held open, and those are outlined in the budget document itself. Again, we'll review our water and sewer rates in January of 2016. We have $816,000 budgeted for building upgrades to the police facility. That's funded through the municipal building fund. We'll have more discussions about that, obviously, as Kent chief gets into his budget. And this should be the last year of our Emerald Ash Borer replacement program. All the trees next fiscal year should be taken down, and the majority of the plantings should happen, and that'll end that three-year program. The tree removal, again, is being funded out of developer deposits, and the plantings are budgeted in the general fund.
Let me just make a comment about our budget. We did this budget, as you know, in December of this year, finalized it usually at the end of January, and did not contemplate changes and cuts as been outlined by the governor. So, clearly, I think that there's a lot of work to be done with this budget. Not only does the board usually look at it very carefully and make some cuts, but this year in particular, I think we have to be prepared for some significant level of cutting, both in our income tax and potentially the freezes of our property tax as well. So, I just want you to know that the snapshot you've had this evening was really done before we had an opportunity to hear from the governor.
Okay. The final section to be reviewed this evening is a review of our fund balances. Probably the most important part of this presentation is to see where our level of reserve or fund balances in our operating funds are currently at. Starting out with the general fund on the right, we have a policy that requires us to set aside 25% to 35% of our operating expenses, the average increase in our property tax levy, our liabilities, which has been minimal over the last five years. And we do have some designated reserves for stormwater and the tricentennial celebration. So, looking at our fund balance, what we want to pay particular attention to is the dark bars, purple bars in the middle. Our estimated fund balance for 2014-15, this current year, is $9.46 million. We're projecting 2015-16 to be $9.2 million, and then to decrease slightly in 2016-17 and 17-18. The bars to the left or right of the purple are the minimum fund balance that's required by our policy. What we're also proposing in this budget is to make a transfer of approximately $3 million to the municipal building fund to bring us more in line with our policy. That requires us to put anything over the maximum in that municipal building fund. So, all in all, the general fund continues to be in solid financial shape as it has been for many years.
Jeff, are you saying that currently, right now, there's a couple, $2 million additional or above our policy?
Right now, we're actually at about $12.4 million. So, we are proposing to transfer that $3 million into a municipal building fund to bring that fund balance down to meet, so not to be over the maximum fund balance.
I'm sure you'll explain that when we get to the building.
Our water fund, really the same type of policy, 25% to 35% of operating expenditures with designated reserves required to be set aside. The water fund, again, is in very good fiscal health. The blue bars in the middle represent the estimated fund balance, starting with this current year and projected out to 2017-18. We are right about $3.6 million of fund balance, and that is higher than both of our minimum and maximum throughout the four-year period that I'm projecting. So, that's good news for the water fund. Sewer fund, same type of policy. In each year, just about, we meet the minimum amount of fund balance that's dictated by our policy. As some of our capital outlay projects expand, that'll dip a little bit, and that's kind of why I want to review our sewer charges in 2016 to make sure that we are covering some of the capital outlay that's required in our long-term plan. And finally, at the golf course, we've talked a little bit about the lack of reserve or fund balance. It's required that we have 10% of operating reserves. We're not currently within policy, but we're hoping that this year's budget and the expansion of our facility starts to generate some surplus so we can build that fund balance back up to the policy levels that are dictated. That concludes my presentation for tonight. I'd be happy to, thank you, answer any questions that the board might have at this point.
Very much, Dan.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our budget from last year.
Yeah.
How much are we, I know through Valerie's guidance and wheeling and union and finding money, how much do we come under?
Our expenses in the general fund are probably, off the top of my head, about $300,000. We've underspent the general fund budget. In each of our operating budgets, departments, the five operating funds, we're all under budget as far as our expenses.
Jeff, is this considered to be a balanced budget then?
Yes, it is. All of our five operating funds are in balance. You'll notice, though, that the total revenues don't meet the total expenses. That is simply because we set aside revenues in past years to pay for those capital improvements, such as the tree program. We had money set aside in the developer deposits fund, and now we're spending it in future years. That's why you see that discrepancy. But the operating funds are completely in balance, all of our funds are.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would like to turn the voting now to adjourn this committee meeting.
Second.
We were moved by trustee Carbonaro, executive by...
Trustee Martin.
By trustee Martin to adjourn this committee meeting. We will convene our normal monthly board meeting at 7:00.
Call a roll.
Call a roll.
Call a roll.
Oh, I'm sorry. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Earlier this afternoon, will the court call the roll, please?
Trustee Aaron's?
Here.
Cammer?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
Shipman?
Here.
President Wallace is absent.
Our first agenda item is planning and zoning. Chairman Cammer.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll try to stay in the room this time. Tonight, we have the revised Rott 59 and Sterns Road intersection plans, and as we usually do, I'm going to turn this over to our community development director, Jim Plazinski, and let him review things a little bit for us.
Thank you, trustee Cammer. I'm going to go over there and do it since...
This is the second time you've reviewed this intersection proposal from IDOT and DuPage
County. At your last review, you specifically asked for our traffic consultant to be in attendance, and Mr. Coulter is here tonight to answer any of your questions. And I'll just go over the graphics that we had last time. What's on the screen right now is the proposal as when it was first prepared by IDOT. And as you can see, at 59, and this really pertains to the eastern leg of the intersection. It's a dual-left-turn lane intersection improvement with traffic signals throughout the whole, all four legs. But the eastern leg going east on Sterns Road, which is in DuPage County, is the most germane to our topic tonight. The county and IDOT originally designed it with a barrier median, which is this black area, coming through here with the dual-left turn lanes going south. In subsequent discussions with property owners and with the Walgreens, and they have, and they had approached the village trustees and mayor, and at the public hearing, they had asked for an access point to remain open on Sterns Road at the site of the new Walgreens and into the Brewster Creek Shopping Center. Subsequent to that public hearing and at the request in support of our commercial entities... Subsequent to that public hearing and at the request in support of our commercial entities, IDOT with the DuPage County Highway Department came up with a redesign of this eastern leg, which one of the left-turn lanes and converts it back into a lane that you can turn left in off of Stearns Road into the shopping center, and also extended it into the childcare center, which is here, and also to Braintree Avenue, allowing only one southbound left-turn lane to remain. This design, again, maintains the geometry of the dual lefts across on the westbound Stearns. Our traffic consultant reviewed it, as did staff. He came up with some concerns that he expressed in this graphic. He was concerned that this single left-turn lane would queue beyond the intersection, and there would be a potential for this kind of traffic conflict at this location of the entrance into the shopping center. There was also a part of this design is that DuPage County wanted to restrict the left-turn movements out of the shopping center area during the peak hours. So if we had input on this, DuPage County, as part of their design, requested that the village enact an ordinance that would prohibit left turns out of this intersection here. And then he also suggested that this taper further to the east of the Braintree be restriped so that you don't have a continuous turn lane into the shopping center, the daycare, and the Braintree, that you break it up with striping and separate the turn lane into Braintree, allowing this left turn, and then this westerly part goes into the shopping center and the daycare center. One other alternative that was presented at our last meeting as an alternative to the whole intersection improvement and as a way of ingress and egress out of the shopping center and the Braintree neighborhood was proposing a traffic signal at the Norwood and Route 59 intersection. This traffic signal is not part of the current design study or the intersection improvement. Subsequent discussions with IDOT, they said you would have to ask them for this, and if we did ask, they're recommending that we ask for it as a separate project. But again, this is an alternative that was brought up. That's kind of where we're at today. As you know, we have residents in the audience, and we have also the shopping center owner. And I want to mention, I handed out a letter to you from the Walgreens store manager who emailed it to me before the meeting, and he is in support of, as you can see, read it for yourself, he's in support of the existing configuration that IDOT has in its preliminary Phase I study. I'll try to answer any questions. Brent is here, our traffic consultant, to answer any questions.
Any questions by the Board? Jim?
I'd like to hear from the traffic consultant, please.
Okay. I will have Mr. Coulter come up here, since the remote's not working from over there.
Oh. I do have a question on one of the, and I can't remember if we talked from the county perspective or the state perspective, but I'm under the understanding that the county has the control of that, of the section going eastbound off of 59. Is that correct?
They have jurisdiction of Stearns Road, correct.
And so if we can move back to that slide with the cars making the left-hand turn, just going, the red.
Third slide.
Okay.
That one, right there. Did we entertain marking off, as the cars turn across traffic, is there any delineation on that lane, on the left-hand turn lane, like white stripes or anything that would say, keep this section of the street open even in that left-hand turn lane? Is that a possibility?
Like the diagonal striping that you sometimes see?
Yes.
I asked that last time, and they said they could not do it.
Well, I can't, I don't know why they couldn't do it, but...
I can't answer that. I mean, that would be between the state and the county. My suspicion might be that because they've eliminated the two left-turn lanes on Sterns Road going westbound to southbound and only have one, that the stacking space is at a premium. So if you mark off a section of that stacking area, you're going to have even less room to store the left-turn vehicles. That's one possibility. It doesn't alleviate the concern that I've expressed in this exhibit, which is that you may still have vehicles queuing up to make a left turn westbound, stopping right at that diagonally striped area, and as you're making your left turn going into the shopping center, you can't really see what's coming around the vehicles in the opposing left-turn lane, so.
That's the reason I asked the question, because I think it would be a possible solution.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think it would solve my concern at that point.
Right. Visibility. You're concerned with visibility.
Yep.
I, I'm sorry, we...
Yeah.
I have a few questions for you. First of all, maybe for the benefit of some of us who are naive, or including myself or any of the members of the audience, as a traffic engineer, what do you do in 20 seconds or less?
What do you do when you have alternatives to choose from?
No, no, no. I mean, what's your job? When the village calls you, you're...
Well, my job is, has been to review site development plans, to review the work that IDOT has been doing on Route 59, any other general traffic assistance issues that come up. I did a little project on Spalding Road with access.
Just germane to this one. Did you spend any time at this intersection?
Yes.
And what did you observe when you were there? And when were you there? And tell us a little bit about those observations.
Well, I was in, I was there in 2012 or so when the Walgreens site was being developed, and I spent a significant amount of time helping staff review site access and kind of massaging the site plan that was proposed so it would be a better fit for that intersection. So I did, I did my own observations of traffic in and out of the Walgreens site as I was reviewing the traffic study done for Walgreens. I have done studies on Braintree and the cut-through traffic on Braintree, which involved doing counts and observing traffic flow on the section of Stearns Road between 59 and Braintree. So I think, although I'm not a resident of Bartlett, I don't use this section of Stearns Road every day, I think I have a pretty good handle on what is going on out there and feel comfortable commenting, as I've commented since 2012, on the site plan and the 59 plans and Braintree and so on.
Now, obviously, you've reviewed this site plan probably several times. And did you do any counts or did you any observation since 2012, reference just this newest intersection change, or?
Yeah, I mean, probably continuously for various issues that have come up, the latest being the Braintree issue.
So you've been out there recently?
Where we actually did counts at Braintree and Stearns, yes.
Okay. And this, the slide that we're looking at now is essentially what that is, is a diagrammatic representation of your concerns about any alteration to the original IDOT plan, in other words, the amended plan. This is your concerns of what might happen. Is that fair to say?
This would be a concern I have, yeah.
And just tell us a little bit, again, what that concern is.
It's the same concern as when, and I can't think of an intersection right around here, but if you're sitting at an intersection that has a median next to it, and you have an opposing left-turn lane, and you're shifted this way, the opposing left has that same median, and they're shifted this way, it's hard to see when you're making your left around the left-turn vehicle that's facing you, what through traffic may be coming in your direction. And that's called an offset left turn. The state likes to avoid those when at all possible because it's a safety issue. And in this case, by creating that new eastbound left-turn lane, they've actually created that situation I just described. They've created an offset between the two opposing left turns, and as you sit going eastbound to turn left into Brewster Creek, you may have left-turn vehicles queued up or moving slowly in a queue towards Route 59, and you're not going to be able to see beyond them to what's coming westbound on Stearns Road. And so that's my concern. Now, with that being said, you have that issue today.
That was going to be my question. It's exactly what I was going to say.
And that occurs when you, with the two through lanes you have westbound. If you get a vehicle on that inner through lane, either in queue or slow, moving slowly, and you have to look and see what's coming on the other side of him in the outer through lane, it's the same situation. You have an offset that makes it difficult to judge what's coming towards you as you make your left turn. So in that respect, they've made an improvement, but they've really not done much more than what's out there right now in terms of that sightline visibility issue. There are other differences between what IDOT and the county have proposed and what's out there right now, but this issue has remained the same.
And short of, and I'm not proposing this, let me be clear with that, I'm not proposing this, but short of completely eliminating that entrance, what do you suggest as an alternative to this?
Well, my initial recommendation to the village staff was that I favored the original concept of dual-left turn lanes. And we requested, and IDOT agreed, and they made some modifications to their design that would allow a U-turn to be made from the inner lane of the dual-left turn lanes on this leg and the other legs. And that left turn, that U-turn would be made on a protected green phase. You'd have a green arrow to make that U-turn. You wouldn't be able to make it at any other time except when a green arrow came up. And my feeling was that that was a safe way of providing access to Brewster Creek. So if I'm looking at the plan we have in front of us now, which is the plan that the county and the state have derived based on the concern about access to Brewster Creek, it's kind of in the middle. It, in my opinion, is not, it's not as good as the dual-left turn lanes. It's not as safe. It's not as safe for the, potentially not as safe for the entire intersection of Stearns and 59 because of the proximity of the Brewster Creek access to Route 59 itself. It's roughly 120 feet to the stop bar westbound on Stearns Road at 59. That's a very, very little amount of separation. But the plan that you're looking at, that we're discussing, the modified Stearns Road, does have some benefits over what exists right now. One of them is that you do have a left-turn lane for eastbound to northbound left turns into Brewster Creek, which you don't have right now. Those vehicles right now turn from a through lane into Brewster Creek. So they're potentially creating a potential for rear-end conflict on Stearns Road without any change from what's existing. The second thing that...
It's better, but not best?
It's better. The second improvement of this plan over what we have right now existing is that there are no AM or PM peak hour turn restrictions out of Brewster Creek. So you can make a left turn out in the evening peak if you choose to do so, just as you could during the middle of the day. The county and the state would require that there be peak hour turn restrictions, as Jim described, so you couldn't turn left out of Brewster Creek onto Stearns Road going east during the AM and PM peak periods, roughly two hours each in the morning and the evening. So we've got that. It's a little bit better than what we've got right now, but in my opinion, not as good as what the state originally proposed. Now, I realize that you guys are trying to, trying to balance traffic movement and traffic safety with accessibility. I have the luxury of maybe being able to focus more on traffic safety and operations than accessibility in this case, but there's a potential risk of implementing what the county and the state have proposed. With that being said, the pavement that IDOT's going to construct is exactly the same. The width from curb line on the south side to curb line on the north side is the same under this modified alternative for the east leg of Stearns Road as it is for the original plan. They just stripe it differently, and they've taken out the median that would be just south of the dual-left turn lanes on Stearns Road going westbound. So I look at this, and I think, well, that's good because at some point in time, if this plan does become a problem in terms of safety or operation, and the problem spills back into the intersection of 59 and Stearns Road, or if it creates its own additional problems at Brewster Creek east of 59, you could always go back to the original plan. It's going to cost a little bit, and I'm estimating maybe around $20,000 or so, to construct a median that would shadow the full width of storage for those dual-left turn lanes. And there's going to be some restriping involved and maybe a little bit of signal controller modification. But it's possible to go back to the original plan if this modified plan has issues that develop over time. It's also possible to easily and quickly change this configuration with some striping and/or some flexible bollards in the eastbound left-turn lane that would prevent access out of Brewster Creek or left-turn access in. So there are some things you could do quickly in the short run if you had to, and there are some things you could do with some additional money to put this back in the condition that IDOT originally proposed if problems develop.
When you say issues and problems, you mean crashes?
Primarily crashes, yeah.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
The original, and then left turn out of Brewster Creek, so you cut into the barrier and left turn, and I'm not talking...
Yeah.
Left turn into, so I'm talking only exit.
There's, IDOT's, that was, that was a design that the county proposed. IDOT's response was, we will not permit that. And I think the reason was, when you, when you open up just the median for that left turn out and in, you're creating a little bit of a constraint in terms of maneuverability.
Yeah, they'll do both, but they won't do the one.
Right. I mean, that was their response.
I mean, I personally think, pardon, listening to Trustee Shipman, do you still travel that for work?
Oh, yeah.
How many lights does it take to get through now?
Depends on the time of day. Sometimes you get right through.
Rush hour, when you go in the morning, two?
Yeah, it depends. No, not typically. Typically, one light.
Which actually brings me to a question. In the course of doing your traffic study, how many actual cars did you observe in the left-hand lane during your study? And how far to the east do they stack up?
To the west.
I mean, did...
Well, when I was observing Braintree and Stearns for the cut-through issue, I was also able to observe the Walgreens access. So during the off-peak, it's probably about 70% of the time, when traffic queued up westbound on Stearns Road does not physically block the Brewster Creek driveway. During the evening peak hour and the morning peak hour, but I actually noticed it more in the evening peak hour, it's roughly 50% of the time it's blocked. And of that 50% that's blocking Brewster Creek Shopping Center access, probably 30 or 40% of that 50% extends back close to and sometimes even beyond Braintree. So that's kind of the condition we're looking at, which, which is why the peak hour restriction makes a lot of sense for a couple of reasons. One, in the peak, that driveway can often be blocked physically by traffic queued up, not just left-turn traffic, but through traffic westbound on Stearns. With the single lane that's proposed on this modified plan, the typical queue in the morning peak hour and the PM peak hour based on IDOT's intersection design... intersection design study, which includes a capacity analysis and queuing analysis, that typical queue is going to be roughly the full length of that left turn lane, if not slightly beyond it. So during those peak hours, it's going to be nearly impossible to get out of Brewster Creek anyway. So the peak hour restriction, in my opinion, makes, is absolutely required if you go with this modified plan.
Okay, so during the peak hours, when you can't turn left out of the Walgreens zigras, where do you go? Down Braintree?
Well, yeah, my findings are that that Braintree, and I know there are people in the audience that live on Braintree, Braintree is, functions as kind of a relief for shopping center access eastbound on Sterns Road.
So wouldn't it be a good idea to go to the original plan and then put the traffic light at Norwood? So you'd have a safe place to get out of the parking lot, turn left, turn left at Sterns, and I'm from 59 to go eastbound, without having to cross five lanes?
Yeah. I think, I think, it's not just a traffic signal at Norwood that I was looking at. It was, it was a signalization of Norwood and 59 and the configuration of Norwood right at the east rear service drive for Brewster Creek that would create a one-way flow. So you could come out westbound on Norwood, but you could not enter eastbound unless you were an emergency vehicle. And there are various ways of controlling that.
If I can say something in here, I wanted to, I live within 100 yards of Walgreens on Braintree. To be honest, I don't see that, I don't see how your position is any different than when you were in your old building. I still come to your store, the same route, and I do come to your store quite often, almost on a daily basis, which is, I know, is your dream. I go home the same way. And I don't, I don't see how this has become, or why it has become such an issue. It's still the same entrance off of Sterns. It's still the same entrance off of Route 59. Secondly, this is state statute that there has to be a no-left turn out of Brewster Creek during peak hours?
No, that's, in this, as Brent reviewed this.
Oh, that's the recommendation?
That's the recommendation.
That's just IDOT's page, County Highway. They, they. Because I have to tell you, it's implied across the street where you go into that shopping center. If you'll notice, there's kind of a modified porch up there. Nobody pays attention to it. Left turns are made out of there at any time of day or night. Now, these are my observations. I always hate to argue with engineers and traffic consultants because they've always got these numbers, you know, right on the top of their heads. But those are numbers in a timeframe or a set of timeframes. They don't live there. I live there. And I, I guess, what I'm saying is that we've got much to do about not a whole lot as far as Walgreens is concerned. Because we have neither impeded or can we help them in any way with this traffic situation. It's the same situation they had five years ago, 10 years ago, 15 years ago, 20 years ago. It's the same situation. Nothing has changed. Except that there was, there's a shopping center to the south of you. Okay, I just wanted y'all to know the observations of a resident.
Could I just clarify one thing? The imposition of the restriction on the left turn out during peak hours is something that the DuPage County Highway Department has put on the design, this revised design. So they came up with a revised design, and then they added that caveat that if, if the village, if they go with it and the village supports it, then they will require the village, as part of it, to have that left turn restriction.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not something that.
With no suggestion as to how to achieve it or enforce it?
We would have to do an ordinance, and then we would have, our police chief would be the one enforcing it. Now, we could go back and ask them to not put that on there, but they, when they came up with this design, they added that caveat.
I think it's foolish.
Yeah.
How much ballpark is the Norwood signal that runs? Either one?
Since it is just a single-led light, we would ask IDOT to participate. And they have said that they would consider that. So with the participation of IDOT and some widening of the right-of-way, I think we'd probably end up costing about $200,000 for us.
Mr. Calder, let me ask you a couple of questions if I can. This intersection seems a little bit, the revised plan for the intersection seems a little bit odd to me, making the right-hand and then the immediate left-hand turn. Are you familiar with any intersections with a similar configuration?
I'm familiar with locations that have side-by-side opposing left turn lanes, but, but with an intersection anchoring those lanes on either end, not where one breaks off in the middle and crosses the other lane. So I'm not aware of any other situation like that. There may be, but I'm just not aware of it.
Okay, because I would be very curious to see how people react to such a shifting situation. And then to have to make a left-hand turn across two lanes, or three lanes really, of oncoming traffic, seems like it would be an awful lot. So let's take a step back, let's go to Route 59. So is it your opinion that it would be safer to access the Brewster Creek mall property from Route 59 than to make that left-hand turn lane?
Well, I think the way I, I look at it is that if we had the original design, you could make a right turn out of Brewster Creek into the dual left turn lanes and then make your U-turn at that point. The projected maximum queue under the original design is only like 125 feet or so. So you're right at the Brewster Creek. More often than not, you're going to be able to make that maneuver into a lane that you can make your U-turn from. So when you say access to and from 59, you know, that you have access going westbound, making a right turn out onto Sterns, you have access going southbound from the dual left turn lanes, you have access going eastbound, which takes you just, you know, prior to entering the Route 59 itself to make your U-turn. So that was my thought from the very beginning as a, as a professional traffic engineer, that that makes sense. And the dual lefts and the U-turn capability has become a very common IDOT design feature at major intersections throughout the region, throughout District 1.
Well, let me kind of stop you there because my situation is the opposite of Trustee Shipman's. So he's, I'm usually headed through that intersection northbound on Route 59. To me, it seems incredibly hazardous that if I want to hit Walgreens, and I use that term hit loosely, if I want to go to Walgreens, I'm not going to make a right-hand turn onto Sterns and then make a left-hand turn into Walgreens. I'm going to turn into that property off of Route 59 north of the intersection. I'm not going to hazard myself turning across three lanes of traffic.
And I've made that comment in my, in my memo to staff was I couldn't quite get a handle on why, why the emphasis on a left turn in from Sterns Road because you have access on 59 itself.
So is there any discussion as to why we have to have a left in? I just don't understand.
I think, I, I was not involved with IDOT and the county as they developed this modified plan. You do have a daycare center east of the Brewster Creek access, which could still have its own left turn access just prior to entering the left turn lane for Braintree. So I, I don't know, I have an answer for you.
The flavor that I've gotten is more.
It was one way in, you couldn't come out. The flavor I've gotten from this is more it's left, it's the left out. Not so much turning left in, it's.
Well, that's, that would.
The concern about the people that I've spoken to, and quite frankly, when I've gone to Walgreens, is making the left out of Brewster Creek, I think, where all of this is coming from.
That's what I always assumed was the primary objective.
That's my take on it.
So when I look at the revised plan, I see it as a solution to a problem that isn't necessarily there. Because the right out, that's the problem, or the left out.
Left out.
Not the left in. Because there's, there's other access.
And one, one option then would be to take that eastbound left turn lane closest to Route 59 and just stripe it diagonally. So that a vehicle coming out during the off-peak still has an area to, to kind of stage their left turn prior to turning eastbound onto Sterns Road.
We were told we couldn't, I asked a question. We were told we could not strike that. So what's the story?
I don't know.
The, the design that's there is what the county proposed.
Okay, well, sometimes you just go in there late at night and you strike the, save a life.
What is the, what is the current striping on this street right now?
The current striping of.
Sterns.
On that east leg. We've got a left turn lane and two westbound through lanes.
Separated by a?
By.
Double yellow line?
Well, a double yellow center line, then lane lines between the left turn.
Are you allowed to cross over that double yellow line?
Police chief is here.
No.
As a matter of practice, it varies from community to community. Let me just say that.
Well, and let's circle back and talk about the elimination of that second left-hand turn lane off of Sterns onto 59. We're losing a left-hand turn lane to head south. Maybe it's not a problem today, but when you look at the numbers for the future, are we going to need that left-hand turn lane? I mean, are we going to have an unintended consequence by eliminating that left-hand turn lane heading south on 59?
The dual left turn lanes on all the approaches to Route 59 are there for safety, and there's also a capacity benefit to them. You can move, for a given amount of green time, you can move more vehicles through with two lefts than you can with just one left. So under the revised or modified plan that you've been looking at, the level of service on the east leg of Sterns Road goes from E, when you're talking report card grades, A's very good, D's not so good, but we're kind of used to it in our area because we have so much traffic. E's considered a design exception. And level of F means, what you were talking about, I think, when I heard earlier, about waiting through maybe more than one or two signal cycles to get through the intersection. So the level of service on the east leg of Sterns Road would go from E on the original plan to F on the revised plan. And the queuing goes from 125 feet, more or less, to 265 feet westbound left turns.
Okay.
That's one reason why we're trying to do two lanes to keep people moving.
Correct, correct, to keep the traffic moving rather than stockpiling.
This is all information that's on IDOT's own intersection design study and capacity analysis.
I have another question. So you had participated in the Norwood study and people cutting through Braintree. Did you have the little things you run over that counts cars on the north part of Norwood? How many were coming into Braintree in that way versus how many were coming off Sterns? I know there was construction going on and people cutting through. Were the signs ever put up, residents only?
Just three questions, give me a chance.
Well, okay, so what I'm hearing at the Norwood, cutting into Braintree, cutting through to Braintree, 30%? 20% of the total number of cars that were going through?
Well, we had the benefit of, of the original police traffic counts, some of which were done during that construction period you were referring to. I also did, during the time when, when I was observing Sterns Road from basically Brewster Creek to Braintree, doing the counts at Braintree. I had independent counts at Braintree and Sterns, which gave me a volume for several, several of the peak hours of the day, which we can extrapolate. They were pretty similar to what the police were reporting, maybe a little bit less, but in the same order of magnitude, for sure. The additional step that we, that we did in terms of trying to estimate the amount of cut-through traffic on Braintree was to actually follow vehicles from Sterns Road through to Route 59. And there's a spot right at the corner of Norwood and Braintree where you can physically see 59 at Norwood and you can physically see Braintree and Sterns. And so on the basis of those observations, and I did it for the AM, the off-peak, and the PM, there's a little bit of variation, as you might expect, between off-peak and the, and the peak hours. But more or less, it was roughly 40% of traffic on Braintree was originating from the commercial area.
All right, if we can close our questions by the board at this point in time. Our Madam President has opened up the possibility of having our people in the audience bring forth questions. And so we're going to do this just as if we would with the earlier session. So I want you to come forward, state your name, your address, and please keep it to about three minutes.
Richard Lewis, 868 Braintree. If I might, I've been talking about this quite a bit, but I just want to recognize that the neighbors that live on Braintree, the cut-through area, if they would stand just quickly so we can see that they're here and present. And, you know, I've, I've been somewhat representing myself as representing them, and certainly I ask them to come up here and say something if they feel so inclined. I had some prepared comments, because of sitting back there, it really occurs to me, and I kind of go back to.
You forgot to mention that that Braintree crowd is one of the nicest neighborhoods in Bartlett.
The nicest, but. But it, it really occurred to me that it was literally probably almost two years to perhaps the day that I stood up here and we talked about the opposition originally that we had for the new Walgreens going in to the corner there because of the increased traffic that we would see on Braintree. However, we had a very nice conversation with Dennis, and, and we came back and said, you know what? If, if we can do something about the traffic cutting through our neighborhood, we'll stop kicking and screaming about the new Walgreens. We'll be okay with that, but help us with that. To date, we've done nothing. And as I look at this, there's really kind of three options that have kind of come up now at this point. The first is, with the barrier median and the inability to turn left out of there, increases traffic, almost forces traffic through Braintree. If we go with the revised plan here with the no-left turnout, it forces traffic through Braintree. If you do, still have the, remove the barrier and still allow left-hand turns out of there, you're now cutting across five lanes of traffic to turn left out of there. That is going to force traffic down Braintree. Every single solution that we come up with does nothing to reduce the traffic on Braintree, does everything to increase the traffic cutting down Braintree. It seems clear that the traffic light on Norwood that's been proposed is a wonderful solution. It's needed at Norwood and 59, along with closing the, the intersection. The cost of this, of course, is significant. We understand that. But certainly, if you look at the amount of traffic that's coming through this intersection is really the result of a lot of IDOT projects or other road projects that are forcing traffic through this, the Sterns Roads bridge, for instance. And those types of things are increasing the traffic through there and are placing a burden on the village, on the neighborhood, and on the shopping center. And it's the residents, really, of the entire region that's benefiting by having this access through this intersection. So it seems to me that in terms of cost, IDOT, it sounds like perhaps they've talked about this, but should be involved in helping pay for and should. about this, but should be involved in helping pay for and should be part of this overall intersection plan and including that traffic light. However, if that were not to occur, I hope the village will do the right thing, and I think the right thing is really quite obvious at this point, and do whatever it takes to solve this issue once and for all. Thank you.
Dennis Cortese, 707 Fairview Lane, Bartlett. I'm also a general partner of Brewster Creek. When IDOT first proposed the intersection improvements, we were well along with the Walgreens project and had negotiated in good faith with Walgreens and showed them, you know, how their access would be, would come in. Any access off 59 would force a complete circling of the building onto our driveway and come to the north. So, when IDOT first made their proposal, some from the village said, "Well, we would never do that to our residents or our commercial properties." And I've got to give IDOT credit and DuPage County credit for working with us to come up with a reasonable compromise. I mean, someone told me, once only, IDOT's, you know, their concerns are traffic, safety, and businesses are somewhere way, way down there, if at all, on the list. Well, we have to consider traffic and safety, but the businesses have to be considered also. And I would agree with what Brent said most of the time. This is an improvement over a situation that existed for 24 years out there. And he added that if, in fact, the situation all of a sudden deteriorated, and I do realize there has been accidents and crashes over the years, that it could revert back to this U-turn thing, which I think is, I'm still trying to figure out when I can make a legal U-turn or not, so it's me that's way off the wall. We could have brought all of our tenants to the shopping center here tonight, but I didn't want to see a riot. But we strongly encourage you to accept the compromise, which we accept. It's, quite frankly, deteriorating the situation somewhat, but it's far better than the situation that was originally proposed by IDOT. So, the light at Norwood would be a wonderful IDOT acquisition, so we will support that. And we strongly support this compromise, which, like Brent said, it could always be taken further into the future. Thank you.
I'm Steve Rouse from Braintree Lane, 838. And I agree that part of the proposal should include that traffic light at Norwood and then also blocking east on Norwood, blocking the traffic cutting back in through Norwood and Braintree. Norwood and Braintree are residential streets. They're narrow streets. They're not curbed, and there's a lot of traffic running down through there. It's barely enough for two cars to go through there. If we have company over and they park on the street, traffic has to stop to go around through there. So, increasing that traffic is, I think, dangerous. Also, when we talk about cut-through traffic, you know, cut-through is not someone trying to get somewhere because they have no other alternative. There are alternatives. Cut-through traffic is meant to get somewhere faster, and that's what's happening. They're coming down Braintree, they're shooting a quick left onto Norwood. It's a dangerous situation. Most of these people here, my neighbors, have children there. Again, these are uncurbed, narrow streets that we're putting, excuse me, we're putting business traffic into a residential area, and I think it's something that needs to be considered. Thank you.
Is the caller there?
I'd like to ask staff for a couple of things before this comes up again. First of all, from the chief, can you get us, unless you have this handy statistics as far as crashes at that intersection, number of, severity over the last number of years?
Absolutely, we do that. I can tell you that for my 30 years, it's been one of the most dangerous intersections in our community for the whole 30.
I know Sterns and 59, Sterns and 59 proper is. I'd want to see that, but also, if you can pare it down to actually the in and out of Brewster Creek, that's kind of what I'm curious about.
So, you're not talking 59 and Sterns, you're talking-
I want to see them both.
The left turn.
As long as you're doing numbers, let's see them both. And the second thing is, we've talked a lot about, "Well, we think this on Norwood and 59 and about this." Can we narrow that down some? Can we try to put IDOT a little bit on the spot and say, "Hey, look, if we go this way, are you in on this project or not," hypothetically speaking, "and how much is it going to cost us?" I mean, I think before any of us are required to go to a vote on this, if we're going to consider that as some possible alternative, we're going to need a little bit more than abouts and maybes.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Another question. If we stripe Norwood, two lanes, one turning south, one turning north, is that going to mess up the flow in the morning when people are giving their doughnuts and coffee, which is backed up there? We don't have enough for four lanes.
I think on Norwood, that traffic signal, and Dan and I have talked about it and Brent, there might need to be some more improvement to Norwood Lane to provide that access out going northbound and maybe also southbound if the signal goes in. So, you've got some potential change to Norwood Lane as it exits onto 59, if the traffic signal is allowed.
Because right now, I mean, I've gone by there multiple times, there's all these people trying to get into Dunkin' Donuts. I don't think they're going for ice cream in the morning.
We've had significant, you know, discussion-
Yeah, there's three lanes there and two are marked now because there's a whole lane and people are going around the one.
Yeah, we've had a lot of time with our police, and, yeah, it's a problem right now. So, there might be some additional modification to Norwood if we do the traffic signal. So, that would be part of your cost that you're asking for, Eric.
If we put the "do not enters" on Norwood to get to Braintree, and someone, is that a pickable offense? Chief?
The "do not enter into"? That's something, the "do not enter".
The chief doesn't write tickets. Who are you kidding? Come on.
In an effort to keep moving this along, are there other statements that other people would like to make?
Hang on a second. I think the chief wanted to answer.
My question.
I don't like that.
So, if we stripe where you can't enter to go to Braintree from Norwood, right there?
From Norwood, you strike it so they can't enter.
Yeah. That's part of the, can you show him, it's the last page of diagram? Say if one of the residents, like, "I don't want to go all the way around," they go. Is that a pickable offense?
A sign, you could say, "No right turn out Braintree." You could say, "No right turn out," and you could have forced that there.
Do not enter, it's not a good one. Ola.
Yay.
All right. Are we done? Trustee Martin, are you done with your question?
Yes, I'm done.
Let's go ahead, and did you have further comment?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot to bring this up on my last visit here. Again, Steve Rouse from Braintree Lane. There's one other consideration. I mean, this area is really developing. There's a lot of traffic, and we're forgetting about a huge corner store that Dominic's is empty, and sooner or later, we're going to get a tenant in there. And that exit there is straight into Braintree also, so that's going to complicate things there also. And also, the corner store in Brewster Creek, the old Walgreens, that's still vacant. So, we know there's going to be continual growth in that area, so I'd like you to consider all the options on the table. Thank you.
Let the record show that President Wallace strove in at this time.
Welcome, President Wallace.
Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, do you have anything else, Jim?
No, that covers it, and we'll bring it back to you with this additional information.
Okay. That's all I have for this evening then.
You'll-
Sure.
Well, thank you for setting in, Madam President. I apologize for my travel delays. It was really unbelievable, but an opportu- What'd he say?
Somebody hasn't been on Braintree.
Very good. But I do thank you all for your patience, and I apologize for the delay. Yeah, straight from the airport. Thank you, Chairman Hammer. Next, I believe, on the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting, we go on to Finance Committee Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three items on this evening's Finance Committee, one of which we've already talked an awful lot about, and then we've got major revenues update and utility tax reduction. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Jeff.
Thank you, Trustee Ranky.
I think we're done.
What I'd like to do is just go over a couple of areas that Mayor Wallace has asked staff, Valerie and myself, to address, and I'll start out with the governor's budget proposal, where in his budget address, the governor proposed reducing LGDF, which is the income tax that we receive from the state, from 8% down to 40%, and that essentially reduces our income tax by 50%. So, a 50% cut to our income tax would mean $2,62,500 in revenue that's currently budgeted on an annual basis. Our current proposed budget, because this came in a little later, does not propose any reductions to services or any cuts to make up for the potential loss of this $2 million. We'll continue to work with the IML, our Conferences of Governments, our lobbyists to work through the state's budget process, and continually work with the mayors and administrators of our municipalities to make sure that we don't receive such a hit. Secondly, as far as what the governor proposed that would affect us, is he proposed freezing property taxes over a two-year period. It's unclear whether that frees the property taxes with levies needed for increased pension or the repayment of debt service. However, over the last several years, we have cut $750,000 to our corporate property tax levy. But if the governor's proposal on property taxes goes through, it will mean that property taxes would be frozen at that level, and we would not have an opportunity at any time in the next two years to make up for that reduction in property taxes. Now, the good news is, is the proposed budget that we just went through is budgeted to be flat. So, if that did happen, it really wouldn't affect us, but it would freeze us. So, you know, I anticipate that when we go into the levy process in December, that we'll continue to have a flat levy from the prior year. So, with that being said, you know, it is kind of a daunting, scary type of proposal from the governor. Many agencies throughout the state are having to deal with the cuts. We have been successful for many years, making sure that LGDF is not shifted back to the state, but, you know, we just don't know at this point if that'll happen or how much will be cut and shifted. So, I don't know at this point if anybody has a question about that, or, okay.
Jeff, in the past years, I know there've been proposals before the General Assembly to cut the LGDF. How many of the last past sessions have we seen proposals in that regard?
It's probably been three years.
Okay. So, this has been something that's kind of long and coming.
Right, yeah. And we've been hearing it's a starting point.
It's a starting point.
Starting point for discussions on this, so.
With a divided legislature and the executive branch, right?
Right, yeah, so.
So, is what you're saying, generally speaking, let's cut it down to brass tacks here, if the governor gets everything that he wants and cuts our share in half-
Yeah.
Is it fair to say that we're still okay?
Well, we would cut, obviously.
Right.
Our fund balance is strong. We could survive it for a couple of years, but by no means could we keep going down that route of not receiving that money. Something would have to, we'd have to keep doing cuts to make up for that loss of $2 million that would occur each year. Okay, and I'll move into the second part of this major revenue update, which really is where we were at when we implemented the utility tax in 2012. Mayor Wallace wanted us to look at the village's economic condition at the time the utility tax was implemented, and at that time of implementation, it was during a recessionary period, obviously, where we weren't recovering. We were experiencing a structural deficit of over $1 million annually. In the prior three years before 2012, we did cut out $2 million out of those budgets over a three-year period. Several positions were left open, as they currently are today. Vehicles and capital outlay equipment were deferred. The non-union pay plan was cut back by quite a bit, and in one of those years, the non-union did not receive an increase. Transfers to our internal service funds from our general fund were suspended, and all of those cuts came with no decreases to our service levels, where the prior village board was very concerned about service level cuts. So, we discussed it quite a bit back in 2012. The board was concerned about our reliance and our fund balance. For years, we had used a half million dollars from our general fund and a transfer from our developer deposits of $350,000 to help balance the budget. I projected back in 2012 that if we kept using our fund balance and where revenues would keep decreasing, that by 2014, 15, this current fiscal year, we would be running an annual deficit of 1.5 million, I'm sorry, $1.8 million, and our general fund would drop to $5.7 million, which would be below our policy levels. So, we provided the board at that time a number of different options that included, again, the use of fund balance and transfers. An increase was proposed to the vehicle sticker program. We proposed increasing the vehicle sticker from $15 to $30, and we also proposed a utility tax. Ultimately, the village board did eliminate the vehicle sticker and implemented a natural gas and electric utility tax that generates $1.6 million annually and helped get us out of that structural budget deficit that we were in. The board at that time also concluded that all of our surrounding communities have the utility tax. So, that is kind of an overview of what was discussed in 2012 and how we got about to implementing the utility tax. On the second page of my memo, Mayor Wallace also asked for a review of our major revenue I evaluated our major revenue sources over a 10-year period, which obviously included the time of a deep recession. Our major revenues are classified as property tax, sales tax, income tax, our local use tax, real estate transfer tax, building permits, and interest income, which at one time, interest income was a significant revenue source to the general fund. Major revenues did increase $772,440, or 5.09%, from fiscal year '05-'06 to fiscal year '12-'13, the year in which the utility tax was implemented. Annualized over that seven-year period, it came out to a 0.72% increase per year. Major revenues from '05-'06 to this current proposed budget increased $677,704, 4.46% in a 10-year period, or 0.44% annually. And then I looked at major revenues from fiscal year '12-'13, the year the utility tax was implemented, to the proposed budget right now, which we just discussed, our major revenues in total have decreased 94- Our major revenues in total have decreased $94,736, or 0.59%, and that is directly attributable to the property tax reduction that we implemented. The most pressing issue we were facing back then was the severe decline in three revenue sources, building permits, the real estate transfer tax, and interest earnings. Pre-recession revenue from these three areas totaled over $3.3 million. By fiscal year 2012-'13, these revenues generated only $955,247. So the total percentage decrease when the utility tax was generated just from these three revenue sources was 71.5%. Our proposed budget for the three revenue sources now has come back a little bit, and we're up to a little bit over $1.2 million, but it still represents a 64% decline over the 10-year period. So that's kind of a background of how we started with the utility tax, how we analyzed it, what the projections were going forward, the use of fund balance. You know, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have on this issue.
Jeff, comparatively, when we had the vehicle stickers, the revenue yearly compared to the utility tax, what's the difference between the two?
About $1.3 million. We generated...
We were getting substantially less for the vehicle stickers then, I mean?
Yes, yes, we were. And that's why we had proposed increasing the vehicle stickers, which hadn't been done.
They weren't doing their job, I see.
Do you have other questions from the board?
Jeff, if, let's play this out. If you don't pass the utility tax and you keep pulling out of the general fund after all the cuts were made that could possibly be made to maintain service levels?
Right.
What happens to your bond rating? Like, how long would that have to go before it would be a detrimental effect?
Well, it became an issue. It was discussed with the board that fund balance, that aren't, that your general fund balance that isn't at a level dictated by policy, which is generally 25% of your operating expenses?
And that's around five...
Pardon?
What is that amount? Around, at that point, is it around five and a half million, 25%?
Yeah, right about there, I would say. You know, Moody's, which rates us, does not look favorable towards that. So it was discussed with the board, and whether or not we would get a downgrade because of that, it's unclear. Moody's always liked the fact that we still had the utility tax and that we hadn't implemented it. And we went, when we went to issue the 2012 bonds, it was a factor in keeping our bond rating, because the utility tax was implemented.
But it's not like UDT, but Moody's is only looking at the utility tax.
No, not at all, right.
I mean, it shouldn't make a difference to them whether we have a utility tax or not. The issue for them could be our credit worthiness is expressed by our revenue and our assets, our cash on hand.
Right.
Do they look into our expenditures?
Yes, they did.
Okay.
And when we went off for our 2012 bonds, we made a presentation of how we were able to maintain our expenses, and I, they... And reserves. They liked the fact that our reserves were maintained at a certain level during the recession. They liked the fact that our pension funds were well-funded at that time.
Which is a good thing, and our reserves, as you explained this evening, some of our reserves are in excess of the maximum.
That's correct. And the previous board, because that was a board that was in office during the deep recession. They wanted that reserve there in case they wouldn't go away or we wound up with a double-deep recession.
Well, didn't we say half a million dollars in interest because of the road loan, because of our rate?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we did.
Well, what if we, you know, I asked if, or how much you thought the industry and commercial, the breakup of the utility tax, what percentage that was?
Yeah, right. The utility company doesn't really track that, the breakout.
Was there any way you could test the citizens and still keep it, or?
No, we can't do that, no.
No, we looked at that.
I would just make a comment that one of the reasons I asked, specifically asked Jeff to do this, is because, obviously, the utility tax has been a hot topic the last few meetings. It's, nobody likes to pay taxes, obviously. But you really need to take a look at the, if things have come back enough to warrant eliminating it all or eliminating it somewhat, and then with this new governor, and I disagree a little bit that it's been talked about for years, because it sounds to me like he's going to be...
Well, it has.
It has. It's been proposed for years, but he's put it, pretty much tipped his hat on it. So I just think it's important that we make a wise decision here, that can affect, so we don't have to go back to robbing out of the operating fund and then trying to figure out a way to...
Right.
Manipulate out of that.
Right. Yeah, I mean, we are seeing increases to the real estate transfer tax, building permits, but as I explained earlier this evening, they're not anywhere near the '05-'06 levels, so...
And many would argue that won't come back.
Not for a while.
Not to that level.
You know, the more we're developed, too, the less we're going to get in those, for those types of revenues.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so let's talk about the utility tax reduction, to the extent that that's a separate issue. Jeff, you prepared this memorandum dated February 24, 2015, where you outlined two different options for phasing out the electric utility tax. Why don't you walk us through those options?
Okay. Valerie and myself did sit down and take a look at this issue. We focused on the electric utility tax to be cut, and the amount that that generates is $606,000 annually. So we developed two options. The first option would be to phase out the utility tax over two years.
And you're talking just about the electric portion?
Just the electric portion, right. The total savings in option one would be $471,671 if we made certain cuts to the budget. We would implement changes to the personnel benefit program, which would be changes to our health insurance plan. That would save $271,671. And we're also proposing to cap all vehicle village purchases to $400,000, and what that would do would lessen the transfers from the general fund to the vehicle replacement fund. We would save $200,000 currently in transfers that are going to the replacement fund. Option two would be to eliminate it in one year. Some of the proposed cuts that we came up with would be to switch medical insurance plan from a fully insured to a self-insured, which we think would save $300,000. That $300,000 savings, you know, as we renew on December 1st, when you switch to a self-insured, self-insured plan, you don't start paying claims, you know, for about three months. So it wouldn't, we wouldn't be paying a full year of claims at that time. We would propose freezing personnel costs, cost of living increases that are in this current budget to the non-union employees, savings $192,766. And we would cap, again, all vehicle purchases to $500,000, and that would save transfers to the vehicle replacement from fund to the general fund of $100,000. So the total savings is $592,766. And if that took place, I'd find out how to come up with the other money to make up for the $606,000.
But that wouldn't put us in a deficit budget of some sort?
No, it wouldn't, because we'd make the cuts.
Well, I'd like to take a step back from this. This is, the utility tax has been an issue that we have discussed internally for, I'd say, since the entire time I've been on the village board. I'm so, and I don't say this very often, I'm very disappointed in these proposals. We've been talking about this for two years, and we get these two little proposals. I think they hang, the proposal hangs, both options hangs their hats, so to speak, on the health insurance, which is another issue that I'm fundamentally disappointed in, that we have not communicated very well with our employees. I don't think that they understand, or we haven't communicated to them effectively that, one, they're valued, and, two, that we're trying to reduce costs without making them bear that cost necessarily. You know, we're trying to change the plan and preserve benefits. So I don't feel like that has been communicated very well, and I know some, at least one of the unions, has taken issue with that. And that's fine, but we need to improve our communications in that regard. I don't think that the intent here is to reduce the utility tax and put that on the back of our employees. So I think we have that health insurance issue that we're still talking about. So when I see option number two, the self-insured program, we don't even know if that's viable, do we? We don't know that answer yet.
Looking at it.
Okay, so that's before us. It's not up for a vote, but we don't even know that that self-insured program is even viable and it's possible as part of option number two. So that's part of the reason why I am so disappointed in this. I think that there has to be other ways to talk about eliminating or reducing the utility taxes, other than these two dimensions here, the health insurance and the vehicle purchases.
Anything that you have in mind, Trustee Ranky?
What would you suggest?
Well, going through the budget, and you've submitted a budget that's 8.33% more expenditures than previous years, I think there's plenty that we can cut out, and I think that we should do that.
A lot of that increase was for capital outlay and capital improvements in Warren Sewer Fund.
And that, there's things in there, there are capital expenditures in there that I think we should take a very close look at.
The general fund is, the expenses in the general fund are less than 1%.
And that's fine.
And the utility tax comes into, goes into the general fund.
Well, let me finish, let me finish. I mean, if you're, if you're, if you're trying to tell us, well, the LGDF is going to be cut in half, and we're going to have to make cuts, we're going to have to make cuts. The cuts are going to have to happen. So let's get started on that.
The cuts are going to happen only if we decide to eliminate the utility tax.
No.
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 Not at all.
Okay. And I think there's a great deal of confusion. It's like a, like a loop. Well, we talk about the health insurance, we talk about vehicle replacements, we talk, now we're talking about the LGDF, even though it's been an issue for years. I think it's confusing the issue. As a board, we have to take this budget, and we've got to make it our own and pare down some of the things that are included in it, even if that means, you know, some things that we don't necessarily want to do. But I am looking forward to the budget cycle, so we can get that done.
Do you propose changes in the healthcare? Were any of those already in line because we have to get in step with Obamacare and all? I know that we had to do a couple of changes anyway.
I think some of those probably would be. There are ones that we've talked about with the board last fall. There are ones that we have talked to the employees about, we haven't implemented. Importantly, the changes that we're looking at are not union-oriented. We don't have to negotiate those contracts, so we're able to implement them across the board.
I would, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, I agree with Trustee Ranky that it shouldn't be on the backs of our employees.
And that's essentially what I was going to say. I would echo a lot of what Trustee Ranky said, in that, first of all, I don't, I don't think we should saddle anything on the backs of the people that do the work here, because, you know, we don't, we don't build cars, we don't, you know, cut people's hair, we don't manufacture shoes. We provide service. And I know, I know I'm preaching to the choir very much here, but just, just let me pontificate for a moment.
Could you just stop a little, just a little bit? I'm sorry.
Happy to. So we, as residents and as elected officials, we demand a lot from the people that work here, and we demand a very high level of service, and we've always said that. And that requires a certain type of person to work in this village. And I think when you start going messing around with their, with their benefits and their pay and some of these other things, that at least gets them to look at you over the top of their reading glasses, the one I have raised, and perhaps a lot worse. So if what you're telling us is that we, you know, either eliminate the utility tax, or to eliminate the utility tax, then we have to do this or do that, well, I would agree with Trustee Ranky. Let's find some other options, because I don't like the option of, in any way, minimizing the contribution that our employees provide to us here. And if the other option is, well, we can't eliminate the utility tax for a year, well, then that's a horrible thing for those of us that are elected, but that may just be the way it is for a year. So I don't, I'd like to see some other things, and I echo the sentiments, too. I think in these binders, we can find some money to cut out.
I also, when I brought this up, I didn't necessarily say two years. You know, I said we could do it in quarters, we could, if it takes five years to get it done, we just slowly start cutting it down. It looks like some of it's coming back. It's probably not going to ever come back to the old way it was. I understand that. So if four years works better pill and it's not cutting dividends, I'm for that.
Yeah, clearly, the onus is on us, just like we expect the employees to work super hard. The onus is on us. We're going to have to come to the next couple of meetings and start cutting stuff, do the hard work. They do the hard work, now it's our turn. So I'm looking forward to that. In fact, if we could, let's go for the rest of the night.
Motion.
I would just add, and I don't, I agree with the vast majority of what the trustees have been saying. However, there is reality, and I always shed a little light on what I go through, you know, when you have a regular, this isn't a new subject, healthcare. It's been an ongoing subject for three years. And everybody that has a job has heard from their employer something to do with their healthcare coverage. It's going to be changed, it's going to be tweaked, it's going to be worse than it was, better than it was, who knows? It's such a complicated, convoluted system right now with health insurance that everybody gets nervous. But we have to face it, there is going to be changes in healthcare, and it's not as good as it used to be, or maybe it's better for some and worse for others. But I agree, we don't want to put that on the backs. I agree that with this, which I read the bulk of this on an airplane, there's meat in here that we can trim back, and we do need to have, in order to maintain the service level that we're requiring with the cuts that we've already made, we need to make sure that our employees are very happy. So I would, I would agree.
Any other questions or comments?
So I guess the overlying thing is that, you know, and I wouldn't be quite as harsh. I'd say, you know, nice try, I know you guys put a lot of thought into this, and we'll try to shave some out of here and work on that.
Right, and I think the focus was, and we had given you that information about the positions that we continue to rotate and keep open and saving nearly $600,000 a year with open positions. Our focus was not to keep any more open positions, not to lose any employees, and so we decided to look in that area. I agree with you, Trustee Ranky. It will be good to go through that budget and see if we can come up with $600,000 additional beyond what we're looking at now.
And I think that's a good compilation from what Trustee Shipman said and what Trustee Martin said. You know, if we don't find it, we don't, but if we find half of it, you know...
It's a start.
It's a start. You know, you trim the percentage down a little. I think the perception is, is that general residents just want to make sure that we aren't collecting more than we need. So if we trim in $300,000 and we stop collecting $300,000 on the utility tax, I think that makes sense. Then you can, then we can actually tell our neighbor, hey, you know what? We did as much as we could. And when we can say that, our job is done, so...
What if we gave a rebate? Saves a lot of money, then everyone gets a rebate.
That's not, that's not a bad thought.
That could work, too.
I'm sorry, I'm done.
Everybody's done? Okay, Mr. President, that's all for finance call tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. I believe that is it for our agenda. I will entertain a motion to...
Second.
To adjourn. Goodbye, Trustee Aaron, seconded by Trustee Hammer. A clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Hammer?
Yes.
Harbin Arrow?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.